Well, hello, everybody and welcome. We start our meeting with an invocation which we observed by a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which we have asked our visiting scout to lead. So if you want to come up to, I think this little mic will work. Or you don't have to speak in the mic if you don't want to. But I'll tell you when because first we're gonna be silent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I have something I just want to give you really quick. Corliss, here. Hallie Burton.
Morales.
Here.
Nash.
Here.
Sted.
Here.
Willis.
Here.
Five present, one absent.
I move next week.
All right, I will take a motion to approve minutes from the eighth.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the minutes for the work session, regular meetings on April 8, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion, a second clerk? Corliss.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Thank you. And now the consent agenda.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? Clerk? Corliss.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willis.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. And we will move into ordinances on second reading.
Madam Mayor, I ask you to ask unanimous consent that all ordinances on second reading be read by number and title only and filed for the third reading calendar?
Without objection. ORD-13-25, an ordinance, CAR 24-7, for property located at 90908 Whitewater Park Boulevard, admitting zoning classifications of the city of Boise City to change classification of real property particularly described in section one of this ordinance adjacent rice away from R-2 residential compact to R-3 residential urban, setting forth a reasoned statement in support of such zone change and providing effective date. ORD-14-25, an ordinance, CAR 24-19, for property located at parcel S 1618 317900, annexing 3.1 acres of certain lands and territory situated in Ada County, Idaho, adjacent and contiguous to the corporate limits of the city of Boise City, establishing and determining the land use classification of said 3.1 acres as I-1 light industrial, establishing and determining the sensitive lands overlay district of said acres, setting forth a reasoned statement in support of such annexation and zone change, directing the city engineer to lodge and file a legal description and map for said annexed lands and territory, providing that copies of this ordinance should be filed with the Ada County Auditor, the Ada County Treasurer, the Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Reporter, and that FDIC Tax Commission, providing that a copy of said legal description and map of said annexed lands and territory be recorded with the Ada County Reporter and filed with the Ada County Assessor and FDIC Tax Commission as required by law and providing effective date. Thank you. That's it for ordinances. So we're actually headed into subdivisions first. So the first subdivision, SUB 25-6, we've got David Moser here. Is the applicant here? Hello and welcome. We don't expect the neighborhood association, is that correct? We don't have anybody signed up. Is anybody testifying on this item? I'll see if at the end of the staff presentation, you're in agreement with the recommendation and if so, we'll take it from there. Great.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The applicant is requesting approval of a preliminary and final plat for a residential subdivision comprised of 53 buildable and nine common lots located at 5727 West Hill Road on 8.13 acres and R1B and R1C zone. As seen here, the surrounding neighborhood is comprised of detached, single-family homes and open space. The farmer's unit irrigation lateral extends across the south and west property line. There is some background and history associated with the subject property. In 2022, the Planning Zoning Commission approved a planning unit development and city council approved a preliminary plat subdivision for the project. The planning development granted reduced interior setbacks and allows for flexibility on the dimensional standards for the lots which granted or allowed for the proposed pair of townhomes on the west side of the property. However, while the applicant was installing the site improvements, the preliminary plat subdivision expired, but the planning and development approval is still active because the applicant installed all the required infrastructure on the site, which would be the roadways, sewer and water. In summary, the applicant is requesting a new preliminary and final plat approval with a development that matched the original project design and layout. This slide shows the proposed landscaping and final plat that basically matches the planning development's original design. This slide shows a perspective of the development that was submitted with the original PUD back in 2022. And as you can see, the approved planning and development matches the subdivision design that is before you tonight. The planning team received letters from the public regarding the project. The neighbors did, and a neighbor did testify at the Planning Zoning Commission hearing. In general, the neighbors expressed concerns of the project's density, traffic and its impacts on the bike and pedestrian safety within the neighborhood. To address these concerns, I would note that the project density, the 53 dwelling units or 6.5 units an acre and the site's original design was approved with PUD 21-0057 back in 2022, which is still active. ACHD reviewed the project and noted that there is capacity on the adjacent roadways to support the project. And finally, the applicant will install detached sidewalks along Hill Road abutting the site and within the development itself. They're also installing a multi-use pathway adjacent to the irrigation lateral abutting the site. The sidewalks and pathway improvements will improve bike and pedestrian connectivity throughout the neighborhood. In conclusion, the planning team finds the preliminary and final plat application comply with the required findings and as such, the Planning Zoning Commission recommended approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for David? And Mr. Adamson, are you in agreement with the terms and conditions of the report?
Yes.
All right, I'll ask the record reflect that the applicant agrees. Anything further? Want to confirm? Nobody's here to testify? Go ahead and take, close this hearing and take a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that SUB 25-6 preliminary and final plat for residential subdivision provide 53 buildable and nine common lots located at 5727 West Hill Road on 8.13 acres and an R1B and R1C zones be approved with the recommended conditions of approval.
Second.
Clerk? Corliss.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yatz.
Willis.
Yes.
All in favor, motion carries. Thanks. And next up, we have SUB 2444. We've got Matt with us this evening. Welcome. Is the applicant, Aiman Park here?
Hi.
And then we don't expect the neighborhood, neighborhood association here. Is anybody here to testify on this one? So I'll take it the same way if that's all right after he presents.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of council, the item before you is a preliminary and final plat for residential subdivision comprised of two buildable lots located at 800 South Robert Street on 0.19 acres within an R2 residential compact zone. The proposed lots comply with the dimensional standards of the R1C zone. Each home will be accessed via a single driveway from Robert Street. The planning director has waived the standard requirement for standard street improvement requirement for detached sidewalks in lieu of seven-foot wide attached sidewalk along Robert Street to the west and five-foot wide attached sidewalk along the south, along Wade Circle, both of which are local roads. This determination was made in order to retain an existing tree on the western frontage and to avoid creating a non-conforming setback of the existing home. In conclusion, the planning team recommends approval of the preliminary and final plat, and I will stand for any questions.
It doesn't look like any questions for Matt. Are you in agreement with terms and conditions? Right, we'll have the record reflect that the applicant agrees. Anybody here? I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing. I'll take a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of SUB 24-44 preliminary and final plat for residential subdivision comprised of two buildable lots located at 800 South Robert Street in an R2 zone.
Second.
You have a motion, a second clerk? Corliss.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Sted.
Yes.
Willis. Yes. All in favor, motion carries.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
If I just make a comment, I really appreciate the applicant bringing this forward. It's a great infill project in a good location in Boise and happy to see this project moving forward. Thank you.
All right, now we have Bree Brush, who will provide a report before the Valley Regional Transit hearing.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. As the mayor sign, my name is Bree Brush. I work in the mayor's office and I'm here before you tonight to give a little introduction before our annual public hearing for Valley Regional Transit. To give you an idea of where we are at in the timeline, last week, we had VRT's annual update reflecting on the previous fiscal year and the performance of our routes, expectations for changes in the coming years, whether that's added frequency or improved services in certain areas. And then today is the next step in the process, which is our public hearing. We invite members of the public to come and share their priorities for the upcoming fiscal year to help guide your direction for the upcoming fiscal year and priorities for VRT. And finally, your feedback on our priorities is best utilized if you get it to me by April 30th so that I can share it with VRT and they can incorporate it into their budget process. I have just one more slide to share with you the priorities that staff recommends for your consideration. And that starts with continued stability on routes. We have seen steady improvements on our best-in-class corridors, Vista, State Street and Fairview, and we continue to see positive growth in other routes as well. So we'd like to continue that before we start making additions to new service or new routes. Second, we continue prioritizing frequency on those existing routes, improving headways from 30 minutes to 15 minutes and peak hours for routes that don't have it, improving service from hourly to 30 minutes on certain routes during peak hours, items like that. And then finally, we would want to support VRT in some of the efforts that they mentioned in their update last week to out, to reach out to employment centers and residential attractors on low-performing routes, some of those new routes or changed routes from the service change in two fiscal years ago. I am happy to stand for any questions. We would hear from members of the public and then give me some feedback on these now or by the end of the month.
Sorry, any questions for Bree? All right, we will take, I don't know if I have a sign-up sheet for this, I might. Are you presenting again?
Madam Mayor, yes. If that's okay, I'd like to reprise in a shorter order what we did last week, so members of the public have.
Yeah, I'd ask you to condense it and next time we'll put it together so they can hear it.
Exactly. So, welcome, Madam Mayor, city council members, members of the public. My name's Elaine Clegg. I'm the CEO of Valley Regional Transit, here to remind you tonight about who's VRT is, the benefits of transit just briefly, and some of the things we've done briefly, as well as our performance last year. Just as a reminder, because a lot of people don't know, we are a regional transportation authority that is a political subdivision of the state. We were created by a vote of the people in 1988, 1998. And we have direct access to the small and large urban FTA formula grant funds. Here's a system roadmap, covers both counties. And you can see, especially in Ada County, there's relatively extensive service. That pink area behind is called lift connection service, where you can get a Lyft ride for $2 to a nearby transit stop to access the rest of the system. This is our access service area. If you're disabled and live within three quarters of a mile of a fixed route, you have access to these services with a guaranteed ride. And this is our services for older adults and persons with disabilities that covers both counties, but not with a guaranteed ride. But we've done a lot of, lot of trips on that service. Lift late night is for income-qualified residents who work late at night and need to either ride to or from work. You all know Idaho's been a fast-growing state. Transit, we know, produces measurable economic impact and that we can have congestion mitigation. More importantly, we can expand access to jobs and services. Thirty-six percent of Idahoans don't or can't drive due to age, disability or some other issue. The annual cost of owning a car in Idaho, in this part of Idaho, is almost $15,000 a year. And it's 52% of income to live in this region if you count both transportation and housing, which is considered burden. We think if we can expand the transit system, we can reduce congestion by getting some of those trips off the road. And we know that there's about a one-to-three economic return on investment for the money we invest in the region versus the impact it has on the economy. And that's our direct spending. Recently, we did a big service restructure and rebrand last year. We're just beginning to see the impact of those. We were awarded a competitive grant to improve Town Square Mall Transit Center. We completed reconstruction of the state and 18th intersection and the bus stops there. We launched that beyond access service that I talked about and have been doing extensive infrastructure and paving, repaving at our Orchard Bus Depot. This year, we've continued to work on those, those issues. We put in a grant for a State Street corridor design. If we get that, we'll be much more shovel-ready to complete the State Street projects. We piloted these low-profile pole seats and we're just beginning a pilot on real-time information at bus stops. We're also purchasing the bus benches so that we can better control where they are and the kind of advertising on them. And some of you may have ridden the Tree Fort shuttles, Tree Line, recently. We've also launched a couple of new programs, a residential pass program and bike share station transition to scooter corrals. With the service change, we're still growing ridership. That's actually pretty unusual with this big of a service change. So we're pretty proud of the fact that, that all modes are up despite that big change. There's some bright spots. Our 15-minute routes are performing really well. Either they're up in ridership or their productivity is high. State Street is, faced a lot of construction and so we, we have. Here, I'll move forward. The boardings per hour are really high, but the ridership itself is a little bit lower. Collin Glenwood and the overland routes are up in ridership. We added service to Saturdays and increased 30-minute service. Some of our regional routes are seeing extensive increases in ridership. And we've got really good productivity on some of our redesigned routes. New service on Ustick and Maple Grove is seeing really good ridership. We know that with those changes, something changed, some things are doing a little, are doing less, obviously. The Harris Ranch route was discontinued. And so, while you can still get there, it's now a harder trip on a one-hour loop. Hill Road service was cut back to peak day, peak hour only. And our new Orchard Route, which no longer goes downtown, but across town, hasn't really been discovered yet. Beyond Access starts to fill in some of these gaps and we've seen a real increase in ridership on that service. And then the lift connections I talked about has also seen an extensive increase in ridership. For this year, we're gonna fine-tune some of those things, starting with Route 10, which saw a real decrease in ridership. We're gonna add another run to the PM hour. We can do that within existing funding. We're also going to do the targeted outreach that Bree talked about. Again, with no additional city funding, these are the projects we have underway this year. Pretty excited about some of the things we think we'll see as a result of these. And then one of the things that I'll remind you and talked about last week with the city council is that if there is an opportunity to do more, there's two, two things we're looking at. One would be a big bus stop project where we do extensive group of bus stop improvements all at once. And the other would be looking at the Route 17, which we know has even more potential and also adjusting services on Saturdays on those 15-minute routes. And ultimately, we'd like to add Sunday service. We're also working with other partners, by the way, to add escalators at Main Street, which we think would be a good addition. And with that, Madam Mayor, you know, excited to hear what the public has to say.
Thank you. All right, I've got four folks signed up. First, we have Becky Walker. And Mary Beth, you're up after that, then Adam McCoy and Beth Norton.
Hi. Hello. Let me state my address. I can't remember. It's been a while.
We've got it.
Okay, my name is Becky Walker. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I just wanted to say thank you to VRT, City of Boise and ACHD for all the community work they do to provide safe roads for me. I bike, I walk, I drive, and I take the bus. And I love taking the bus. Unfortunately, I live in Meridian. I don't live in Meridian. I work in Meridian. And I can't utilize the bus like I used to when I worked in the East End. I was really sad when they took away my ADAX bus. And I was even sadder when they took away the 7A. I ride the 24 and there's no direct connectivity for me downtown like there was with the ADAX. It takes almost an hour for me to get downtown and I can bike much faster than it takes to ride the bus. And I'd also like to see weekend services and later hours because sometimes you like to meet your girlfriends for happy hour and you want to take the bus and be able to walk home after a beer or two. So I just encourage you to look at West Boise a little bit more and see how we can bridge that gap even more. I live in a highly populated refugee community and I think that if they had better services, they would be more willing to ride the bus. Thank you.
Mary Beth.
My name is Mary Beth Netting. My address is 5390 North Wall Avenue. Madam Mayor and members of the Boise City Council, I have been a public transit user since I was a little girl. And for the past 17 years, I have been a regular rider on the VRT number 10 bus that runs to Northwest Boise from Main Street Station. In the recent changes to VRT routes, the number 10 was proposed to be eliminated. But due to public feedback and the advisement of all of you, hourly peak service was kept for the number 10 while midday and evening service was eliminated on the route. And although it did have an impact on me, I appreciate the service that is available to people in my neighborhood who can make the service work for them. Thank you all so much for the continued peak service on the 10 and I am psyched about that additional evening loop. That will be so helpful. So thank you. Late last year, the route changes were scheduled to happen. I reassured myself that although I would not have the number 10 available to ride except for one day a week, when my work schedule coincides with the service, I reassured myself that I could ride my bicycle to work and to run errands. As a regular bicycle commuter, I use my bicycle and public transit in my mobility. But then I fell twice and was unable to ride my bike. And then I no longer had a bus available to ride except on that one day. So for the first time since I was a senior in high school, which was millions of years ago, I relied on driving a car. My husband and I share a vehicle, so that complicated things to me, for us. And I really don't like to rely on a car for my mobility because I want to be a part of the solution and not part of the problem. Public transit is part of the equation in addressing congestion mitigation in Treasure Valley. I also feel very disconnected from my community and neighborhood. It was an odd feeling for me to be in a single occupancy vehicle and not interacting with my community. I do believe in a time when things are very divisive, that public transit provides an opportunity for us to interact with people who are not necessarily like us or who think like us, but that we can find that common ground through those interactions on the bus. You don't get that in a single occupancy vehicle. And as a matter of fact, I think that driving can add to those hostilities that we feel towards others. I look forward to the day that service in my area is improved again. But in the meantime, I appreciate the service that is provided for me and others. I ask that you continue to fund public transit in the city of Boise. Thank you also very much.
Thank you. Next, we'll have Adam McCoy.
Well, hi, everybody. I'm Adam McCoy. First off, I want to say that I'm a big fan of all of the changes that have been happening. I'm really excited to see the real-time counters show up at stops. I do have a concern that those are not enough to convince elective riders to start taking the bus. I think we might have reached a certain saturation point with captive riders. So, but now we need to focus on how do we get people to choose to not be in their cars and to get on the bus. And I know that there's been a large marketing push to get awareness for VRT out there, especially recently. But I think a more effective way to convince someone that the bus might be right for them is this, if they're sitting in their car in traffic, they get to watch the bus pass by them every single day. I think a smart approach is to look at ways that we can move the bus through traffic more effectively with simple means, something that can be piloted and tested with cones and paint instead of large infrastructure e-hauls. I don't think that's going to be a very easy political battle to have. The knee-jerk reaction to giving a bus priority, especially during heavy traffic, is likely to rile up the vocal objectors. But I think it's an important perspective to remember that a functional and popular transit system is good for everyone on the road. Every bus that passes you represents 20 to 40 additional cars that you could have been stuck bumper-to-bumper with. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is anybody else here that wanted to talk? Oh, yes, I'm so sorry, Beth. Norton.
Thank you, Mayor McLean and council members. I'm Beth Norton. I'm here to testify in favor of continuing funding for Valley Regional Transit. After this legislative session, I'll just say it's really like refreshing to be able to come and testify in support of something transportation-related. I really appreciate the work VRT has done. I really appreciate the work that the city of Boise has done in continuing to maintain public transportation. I'm a bus rider. I just took a bus to acupuncture the other day. It was lovely. I agree with a lot of what my community members have said in terms of public transportation, creating community and just being a way of life that I prefer. There's nothing more freeing for me than being able to walk to a bus stop, get on a bus, catch a plane, go wherever I'm going, catch public transportation there and then like be at my best friend's door in Oakland four hours later. It's an amazing feeling. I want more Boiseans to feel that feeling. And I agree that there are some things we could do to get people to electively ride the bus. I have a lot of conversations with people about this. I'm probably pretty annoying about it. But I do think I would love to see, I'm just in this mode of trying to like dream big and imagine the impossible. And I would just love to see Valley Regional Transit and bus service here in Boise be free. I think we know a lot of studies that show that the time it takes to accept payment slows service down and that it just falls onto those people who are kind of forced into that service. So even though $2.50 a ride is a lot lower of a cost over time than owning a car for people who could just get in their car for what they kind of see as free versus pay $2.50 for a ride, that's kind of a hard sell. So I would love to look at the math behind that and say, how much income is VRT really generating through its rider fees here in Boise? And what would the city need to do or what sort of fundraising efforts would we need to have to make up that gap so that people could just get on and ride the bus? I think it would really, I think it would really encourage people to ride who aren't currently riding. And I also agree that about expanding service out to West Boise, we have a lot of movement in that area. I work in the events space. I work in the refugee resettlement space. We have a lot of clients that live out there. We have a lot of great big walk, bike, bus initiative, community event, things that are happening this summer. So would love to see the city and VRT come on board with supporting those events. I know you guys already are. So again, I'm just here to say thank you. Thanks for your work and that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else here? Is anybody online? All right, I appreciate, yes. Sir, I'm sorry, I can't have, I can't take a question during, no, that's all right. I just. Sir, um, I'm sorry. I can't have, I can't take a question during. No, that's all right. I just want to, I'll explain it. Um, I, first off, I can't have testimony or anything not in my, not right into the record, but we can't take questions right now. The budgeting portions of this happen later. I think that's what you were getting at was whether or not there was, um, we have the financial capacity to, um, continue to invest in the bus. And that is something that we continue to work through. Um, and many of the things that the public today requested that we consider funding, um, would be better funded by the state funding transportation and working with us or other cities joining VRT and funding. Um, because we're at our max. So any, anything additional right now is impossible, um, as much as we'd like it to be possible. Um, but we have this hearing, not because we can consider, um, investing more, because we're investing more in this than we are in other things, um, but because we want to give the, the public a chance to talk about what they would like to see in a bus system that was funded, um, that a different agency, Valley Regional Transit, works to fund. So I'll, I'm going to close this hearing. Thank you all today for coming. Elaine, thanks for your leadership. Stephen, good to see you too. And take care, everybody. We are going to move to our next hearing, correct? Okay, we're going to move to the next public hearing. Which is CPA twenty-five-one on Amity Road. We've got Jesse Lyle here, I believe, from staff. Hi, Jesse. And then Jackie Franz, the applicant. Is the applicant here? Sir, you're the applicant? Wonderful. Okay. We do not expect the Neighborhood Association or public to be here, um, but I'll check in. First, we're going to hear from our staff, and then we'll hear from you, sir. So you're welcome to take a seat.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. The item before you is CPA twenty-five-one. This is a comprehensive land use amendment to remove five point six or zero six acres from the Boise City area of impact located at one-two-five-oh-four West Amity Road. This property is designated as compact on the future land use map. The subject property is located within the Boise City area of impact, though it is approximately three quarters a mile south of current Boise City limits. The property directly abuts Meridian City limits to the west, and the applicant wishes to eventually annex into the city of Meridian and develop the property with residential uses. It should be noted that amendments to the future land use map and removal of property from within the area of city impact are not considered lightly and should be considered on a case by case basis with regard to specific conditions impacting the property. As described in the project report, the property is not able to voluntarily annex into Boise City as it is not adjacent to property within Boise City limits. There is an existing Boise sewer line on the east side of the subject property and within the Amity right of way. The property could potentially develop within Ada County. However, any development would be required to provide septic service rather than connect into the existing sewer line due to a moratorium on new sewer connections to properties outside of city limits, um, but within the area of city impact. Development reliant on septic systems is generally limited to one unit per acre or about five units for this whole property, which does not reflect the future land use map designation of compact and is less dense than the surrounding subdivisions. Development of the subject property within the Boise, um, or City of Boise or area of impact would require either an evaluation of the sewer moratorium or annexing many parcels on the southwest area of impact, neither of which are likely in the near future. However, allowing the property to eventually annex into Meridian City limits would allow for, uh, the property to be developed in a more cohesive manner with connections to existing subdivisions and the potential for connection to an existing pathway. Prior to annexation into the city of Meridian, Ada County must agree to adjust the area of city impact boundary, and the city of Meridian must agree to allow the property into their area of impact. Then the property could eventually annex. So in conclusion, there are a particular set of circumstances concerning the subject property that makes the proposed future land use change supportable, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Doesn't look like there are any questions.
Madam Mayor.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry.
Hey, Jesse, thank you so much. I noticed in the packet there was the documentation about the sewer moratorium. I think it was twenty-seventeen. Could you give us some details on how that sewer moratorium was put into place? In terms of, um, I guess procedure is something that I'm most interested in.
Uh, sure. So the sewer moratorium is, um, something that's been in place for a long time and amended multiple times throughout the years. So the, uh, twenty-seventeen amendment is the most recent one. Um, and so the exact language about the extension and connection outside of city limits is on your screen underlined. And then, uh, there are a few exceptions which are bullet pointed, but essentially, um, anything could connect that was approved prior to July twenty-second, twenty-fourteen. Um, or, um, any new connections could be made that do not involve new subdivisions. So that's the most recent language.
Madam Mayor, Jesse, thanks. That's very helpful. So what would it take to reevaluate the sewer moratorium?
Uh, Madam Mayor, council members, I think that would be a, a larger discussion, uh, based on kind of need and, um, what our services could provide. Uh, I'm not sure the exact steps, but I think it would eventually have to come back in front of this body.
It would take an ordinance change. It's by ordinance. It's city ordinance that, um, without, um, I think it's ordinance, without extension. Or might just be policy. No, but council, we, it was passed in, can't remember which year, um, the annexation is required for us to extend our sewer system. All right. Thank you. Sir, are you, um, you can come on up. You're requesting that we de-annex you so that, um, you can move forward the process with Meridian, correct?
If, do you have any questions?
If you don't have any questions, I don't have anything for.
You, you agree with the request, correct?
Yes.
All right. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Further discussion?
We, we need to close the public hearing?
I just wanted to see, I was, I meant further questions for staff. Confirm me again that you do have one?
I do. Madam Mayor, Jesse, do we have any, um, documentation from the city of Meridian about their comfort level with this?
Uh, Madam Mayor, council members, we did receive a letter from the planning department in the city of Meridian saying that, uh, they're open to, uh, potentially annexing this property. Uh, they would also have to go through their full process.
Anybody here? To, that wants to testify on this? Online? All right, I'm going to close the hearing. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I move approval of CPA twenty-five dash one, a comprehensive land use amendment to remove five point zero six acres located at one-two-five-oh-four West Amity Road from the Boise City area of impact.
Second. We have a motion, second discussion?
We'll miss you. But we understand why.
Clerk? Corliss?
Yes.
Morales?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Sted?
Yes.
Well, yes.
All in favor, motion carries. All right. And now we'll move into the appeal of DRH twenty-four-three-forty-eight on Boise Ave. We have Rachel Farrell, the design review planner from the city, the appellant, Lane and Judy Osborne. Hi, welcome. So you'll come up after staff and you'll present after our staff presents. And then the applicant, Rodney Evans, represented by Ben Simple. Welcome. We, is Eric Berg online? Fred, are you here for Sina?
Okay.
Oh, he is. Great. He's here. All right. And then I've got a couple folks signed up for this, that once we go through that, I'll go through these. And then if I didn't call you, I'll just ask you, come sit in the front row. We'll take turns. Right, welcome.
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council members. This is the appeal of the Design Review Commission's denial of an administrative appeal for DRH twenty-four dash zero-zero-three-four-eight. The subject property, the subject property is located at fifteen-oh-eight West Boise Avenue on a zero-point-three-eight acre site in the R-two zone. The site is located on the corner of Boise Avenue and Vermont Avenue, surrounded by residential uses. The applicant is proposing to construct a new twenty-six unit multifamily residential building. Ingress and egress to the site would be taken from Vermont Avenue and an alley off of Boise Avenue. Detached sidewalks are proposed along all street frontages, and parking would be located in a partially subterranean two-level parking garage. The building would be four stories with a maximum height of forty-five feet and would provide a total of thirty parking spaces, which is more than the required twenty-seven. The project isn't allowed use by right and meets all dimensional requirements for the development code. So this design review application analyzed articulation techniques, balcony and window treatments, landscaping requirements, and all other design standards from the citywide design review guidelines. Staff has provided the project background in your council packets, so shown here is a brief summary on the history of the application and the appeal. As detailed in your council packets, the appellant submitted foregrounds for appeal, which we will now address individually for the remainder of this presentation. To address the first appeal issue, the project falls within the compact land use designation and meets all goals and policies of Blueprint Boise. The project was found to be within the limits of the R-two zoning standards, which explicitly permits this type of development and has dimensional constraints that govern the design and restricts the density. In response to appeal issue two, the project meets all setbacks, as further detailed in your council packets and shown here. And in response to appeal issue three, this project isn't allowed use by right and did not require a rezone application, only a design review application. So as detailed in your council packets, procedure was followed to notice the adjacent property owners as such. In response to appeal issue four, the city relied on the expertise of Ada County Highway District, and they are here online tonight to answer any questions that you may have. As outlined in your council packets, all design standards as it relates to the streetscape and detached sidewalks have been met. In conclusion, the planning team recommends city council deny the appeal. So I'll stand for any questions now. Thank you.
Any questions? All right, we'll hear from the applicant, but we might follow back up with you. Judy, Ms. Osborne? And there's a, there should be a clicker where once you get the slides opened, you'll be able to click. Great.
Hi, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Judy Osborne, and my husband Lane Osborne is here with me. Our address is fourteen-fourteen Vermont. Our home is directly across from Vermont Avenue from one of the two garage doors for this project. We did hire Brian Ertz as our attorney, and he has given us some pointers. The reasoned statement denying our appeal at the Design Review Commission was inadequate. Neighbors provided accurate testimony about code problems with the project that were not addressed by the commission. The approval of this project was flawed in procedure and violates numerous sections of the zoning standards of Blueprint Boise. The flaws result from contradictions in the modern zoning code, staffing failing to apply standards correctly, and the design for review commissions failing to address these errors. First, the project is in clear violation of the land use map. The proposed project is in a high density on a parcel that is designed compact, not high density. This diagram shows the property in the area designated as compact in the Boise, in the Blueprint Boise. This diagram from the comprehensive plan shows that the range of compact density is allowed as six to eight dwellings per acre with twenty-six units on point-three-eight acres. This project is sixty-eight point four dwelling units per acre, more than four times the limit of an R-two zone in Blueprint Boise shown here. In fact, the density is in the range of the verve and identity projects in, on Boise Avenue and pro-test, both of which require a rezone to residential office, the limit which was eighty-seven point one units per acre. The modern zoning code now allows unlimited density, but the land use map remains the same. So it is arbitrary and capiculous to allow sixty-eight dwelling units per acre on this parcel without updating the land use map. Second, the setbacks were applied improperly. Here's a section of the code which shows the setback requirements for garages and surface parking. The lower two levels of this structure are in a parking garage. The code specifically requires twenty feet from either front or side street property lines. This building only has ten feet. This was explicitly testified, explicitly testified by Eric Berg of Sina and was completely ignored by the Design Review Commission. Also, the plans show here, the Boise Avenue setbacks were described as the front. This would make the north property line to the rear setback, which would need to be fifteen feet from the north property line. Instead, the applicants also chose to call Vermont side the front setback, making the north property line the interior side setback, which only is required to have five foot width. This makes the rear setback off the alley. The alley setback is only five feet, which, given that the alley is only fourteen feet wide, does not, is not given the required twenty-two feet of backup space the city requires as a parking standard. Third, since the project exceeds the density for compacts specific in Blueprint Boise, it amounts to a rezone to high density and should have required a large radius of advanced notice instead of just adjacent neighbors, owners after approval. That many neighbors were unaware of this project, like it could be, like this could be approved at staff level demonstrates that the notice of the huge changes, the modern zone code, which would make that, that was given to residents and owners citywide, was insufficient. The development standards for the R-two zone were changed to a degree that would amounted to a rezone to R-three and far beyond. All property owners should have been notified by mail in writing that their properties were being rezoned. That they were not is abuse of the process. Any notice posted by the city and local newspapers would not have been seen by out of town property owners. A large radius notice is recognized in the greater impact of the project to this scale, and yet only adjacent properties were notified after the fact and other properties close to the project were not notified. Fifteen-fifteen West Boise Avenue is closer to the project than fifteen-oh-eight Vermont, yet received no notice. Fourth, the traffic count used at ACHD analysis was two years old and was taken in June when traffic counts are lower due to BSU being out of session at that time. It is on a six-way intersection, and when it is busy, it's a mess. The alley next to the apartments is a hundred and forty-five feet away from that six-way intersection. You have a four-way stop signs and one through street, Boise Avenue. Excuse me. This area is very confusing. Last week, a traffic counter was seen on Boise Avenue for one day, but not on Vermont. There are no sidewalks for two blocks on the thirteen-hundred and fourteen-hundred blocks of Vermont going to BSU. The Ada County Highway District reported that this sec, street section by the proposed apartment complex on Vermont says that district policy seven-two-oh-seven point-five-point-two and seven-two-oh-seven point-five-point-seven shall include curb, gutter, and a minimum of five-foot sidewalks on both sides. If you want people to walk to BSU or the bus stop for your safety, you need sidewalks instead of walking down the middle of the street for two blocks. Another aspect of this project that was mentioned at the public hearing by Holly Thomas, but received no attention from the commissioners is that is shown here. Clearly states, I think I'm off one. It clearly states that the access to parking for the structure is allowed only from the alley and not from Vermont Avenue. Neighbors on the block with driveways who sought to create additional parking off the alley were told by city staff, Olivia Harrison, that doing so would require abandoning the use of the driveways under zoning code section eleven-dash-four-dash-o-seven dot J dot A. So why is this project allowed two access points? One can only assume that this was permitted by either staff because they didn't know the code or because the small size of the site would not allow room within the structure to ramp down for the second parking deck. On block thirteen-hundred of Vermont with no curbs or sidewalks, the people are taking out front yards and putting in parking. Thirteen-forty-four and thirteen-fifty just did that last week, and they already have parking in the back. This apartment complex has only twenty-five regular parking spots for forty-two bedrooms. We have a big parking problem already with the little homes and duplexes being built and needing, and we are needing more parking. As mentioned by Tom Larson at the hearing, the building is not ADA compliant. We understand that federal law requires that a three-story and taller building like this have ADA elevators. Also, Boise code requires that open space be accessible to all residents. Yet the courtyard on the third and fourth floor is totally inaccessible to a wheelchair user. is totally inaccessible to a wheelchair user with an apartment on the second floor. Finally, both in Blueprint Boise and in the section of code on multifamily using, the building is required to transition into the existing neighborhood in terms of bulk setbacks and forth. You can see from this, the rendering, that the building just looms over the neighbors. Oh, where am I going here? Just looms over the neighbors and is completely out of place in this neighborhood of single and two-story homes and duplexes. To summarize, this project is out of compliance with the American with Disabilities Act, the comprehensive plan, and parking standards, setbacks requirements, and multi-family standards. It is, it is the result of trying to cram too much of a building onto too small of lot. Neighbors' valid concerns were not addressed at the design review hearing. We ask that you uphold this appeal. Neighbors understand that this property is likely destined for some type of multifamily project, but hopefully something built more to the scale of the neighborhood like a bungalow corridor mansion apartment. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor. Judy, thanks so much for being out here. I'd like to ask you a question, if you're open to that. I appreciate all the time you took. It's obvious the amount of time you took doing, looking through the code and reviewing the property and setbacks. You had mentioned something earlier that I just, I didn't quite get about a rezone of the property or not being noticed of the rezone of the area. Can you help me understand that a little bit more?
It amounts to the, amounts to the rezone and high-density and should have required a large radius of advance. Is that what you're saying? That more people in the neighborhood should have been notified about the rezone and letters were not sent out to everybody that should have been notified in that surrounding area.
Okay, so it's on the noticing of it. Okay, great. All right. Yeah.
Madam Mayor. Thank you again. Can you just clarify that? When you're saying they should have, are you saying per our policy they should have? Or you believe your, your opinion is that they should receive, more neighbors should have received?
That's what, when we met with the lawyer, Brian Ertz, he found neighbors that were not notified that in code should have been notified about what was going on.
Okay, thank you.
And that's where we got that from.
Madam Mayor, is there a time we can ask a question to staff? On this particular project, was, was this a rezone of the land there?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Carlos, no, this was not a rezone application. This was a design review application. The project fit within the rights of the land use and the zone. So by right, it was allowed to develop. All it needed was a design review application to review the design of the building.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, follow-up.
Yes.
What is the noticing procedures for these design review? Applications?
Actually have a slide. So Madam Mayor and Councilmember Carlos, the noticing procedure on this type of application as per this code section is an administrative application. So the code tells us to notify all adjacent property owners. So I pulled up the notice, the notice radius map, which shows the properties highlighted in gray that are by code adjacent to the property. So those property owners were notified about the administrative approval.
Madam Mayor, I have a couple of questions for staff too. Can you speak to the ADA design compliance and the requirement on this building and whether that meets the requirement?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember said, "I don't have information on ADA compliance with me at this time prepared for the hearing." The applicant is here. They might, and their design team, they might have a little more information on ADA compliance in reference to the question brought up earlier.
Okay, and my last, and so I can hold that, thank you. The, my last question was about the alley access, the, the residential requires. Allyatt, can you just speak to that part of the appeal claim?
Yes, if you just give me one moment. Thank you. Thank you so much, Madam Mayor and Councilmember. So the section of code that was brought up that specifically talked about residential garages. So that's actually a code reference to a single-family residential and not actual parking structures.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Madam Mayor. I just want to go back to the noticing because I, I hear this often, like someone didn't get a notice, or I never got a notice about this. Can you confirm what records we retain? So I believe I've seen like scanned copies of letters before they're sent off with stamps on them. Like what is the, what can we show someone if someone said, hey, I never got a notice? What could we show them that shows proof that we did in fact get something out?
Yes, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Morales, the record that we have is actually a list of mailed notices that we provide in the record. So that'll be accessible to the public on the permitting and licensing system. So all names and addresses will be listed in the record under the file name.
Madam Mayor, I have a question just a little bit on the rezoning. I, I want to get to the heart of the question. Was this area rezoned as part of the modern zoning code? Was there a change? I've, I've pulled up the conversion map here, and I'm trying to map it out myself.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Willits, I'll have Josh check on that. I didn't bring the information with me at hand. Could possibly, there are a lot of areas that were rezoned. So I think we can check that in just a matter of a minute.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's, if I'm hearing the argument correctly, I think that's the argument, is that it was rezoned as part of a bigger effort?
It could have been rezoned as part of the modern zoning code when it went through. So we can check to see when that happened.
Thank you.
Further questions for staff? All right, now we'll hear from the applicant.
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, Ben Semple with Rodney Evans and Partners, 1450 West Bandic Street, Boise, Idaho, 83702. I want to thank Rachel for her work in kind of running you guys through the, our response, I guess, or the city's response to the appeal. I had a few things to add. I didn't want to just reiterate my memo that I had provided in response to the appeal. The, the process was an administrative minor design review application process. My client is the builder and the developer. He hired an architect who did the designs of the building, and we followed all the steps through early assistance, concept review, interdepartmental review with the city staff, submitted our application and received our administrative approval as is outlined in the steps for a parcel that is in an R2-zoned property. The setbacks that were applied, we do have a 10-foot setback to the building. The interior space of that building, there isn't parking for another 10 feet. There's some storage, some bike storage, some active hallway space. But the parking itself is 20 feet from all property lines, which is further from the back of sidewalk than the sidewalks all fall within the right-of-way. I, I'm glad that it was brought up about the backup space. No vehicles will be backing into the alley. They'll all be able to exit forward out of the parking structures, whether it's onto Vermont or the alley. One of the interesting parts of this site is we have about five to six feet of topographic fall from the alley to Vermont. So the alley is much higher. To take advantage of this and work with that topography, the designer of the building split the parking. So half of it goes off of the alley, half comes off of Vermont. And that's, so we have 15 parking spaces from each, and that was to deal with the topography. We also felt like it lessened the impact on both of those travel ways. ADA access, there is access to apartment units and parking garage through ADA on the first floor. Then there's another entrance into the parking garage of the second, or the second-story parking, which also has ADA accessibility to other units, the leasing office. And then approximately, let's see, sorry, 2,700 square feet of open space is on the ground level, which is accessible by all residents, ADA accessible on the ground landscaped areas. The courtyard is 720 square feet, and it is on the third floor. So it would be accessible to those residents there, but it was not necessary to meet all the open space requirements for the project. It was just an added amenity there. I do just want to reiterate that this project met all the standards of code or exceeded them for height, setbacks, density. And, you know, we, we really appreciate, are looking forward to this project going in. Think it's a high-quality project for this area, provide necessary housing, and we're overparked. So we feel like with the parking and the addition of a five-foot detached sidewalk along Vermont and a 10-foot wide detached sidewalk along Boise Avenue, this project has fulfilled all of the obligations within code. It's not a requirement for this project to build sidewalk all the way to BSU as those properties develop or if homeowners want sidewalk in front of their homes to facilitate that, they can definitely build that. Or if ACHD comes through with a larger project to build out that street section, it's needed there, but this project can't build all that. I'd stand for any questions you might have.
Madam Mayor. Hey, Ben, thanks for coming. Can you talk a little bit about how, I don't know if you know this, how those parking spots will be distributed to tenants? So first come for serve is their fee. Like how do you distribute those? And between the two garages, will they be assigned one? Are they going to be going between the two?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Morales, there, it's open parking. You know, there is ADA that's included. There's EV parking that's included. Those are prioritized for those users, specifically the ADA. If there's not an EV vehicle user, they can still park in an EV space. They don't have to have an EV spot. Obviously, if a resident has one, they would have priority for those spaces. First or second floor, you can park. I'm sure that the residents will figure out if they're on the first or second floor, they're probably going to park in the first floor one. And vice versa, you know, third and fourth floor residents would park in the, the second floor. We're not intending to assign them or residents will have to pay for a space. I do want to mention there's 30 parking spaces in here, 27 are required. And, you know, the EV and ADA is part of that number, not required to be over the required number.
Anything further? Do you have more?
I, I don't have anything.
I just noticed it was paused, so I wanted to give you more time if you needed it.
Um, I mean, I, I guess just to highlight.
I didn't mean on the question, but I was.
I guess just to highlight, we didn't rezone the property. It was R2. I don't believe it converted. I think this was R2, as is a lot of these lots around this area. A lot of substandard or original lots of record. But I believe it was all R2 since the code is written.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we will hear from the public. Madam Mayor, we do have Eric Berg online too. Oh, Eric, sorry about that. Yes, go ahead, Eric.
Eric.
Neighborhood Association.
Eric Berg, Southeast Neighborhood Association, 1301 South Grant Ave. Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, every set of guidelines, rules, or regulations at its heart has a core premise that the whole system is based on. For the modern zoning code, that premises that regulating form and design is how one makes for an intelligently-built city. The very heart of form-based code is the simple idea that via setbacks, good practices, and sensible construction, we can encourage a built environment that we all be proud of. This project, and I want to be very clear on this, does not meet the straightforward requirements of our modern zoning code, contrary to the applicant's contention. And it is for this reason that the Southeast Neighborhood Association voted unanimously to support this appeal and encourages you to reject the project. If I could have staff or someone pull up page 95 of the project, project report, that would be fantastic because 95 and 96 are the two site plans that will be most helpful. The new code prioritizes an active and usable street frontage. And for this reason prohibits street access when alley access is available. We do this for all sorts of development. In areas like this, in this part of town where alleys exist, the city has long held that the best design is to utilize the alleyway for safety, aesthetics, and good building design. And in the modern zoning code, the city put that into code. It was so important to people. This was the right thing to do. And in multiple cases now, the city has even required applicants to abandon street-side parking if they're to use an alley access. It is safer to have cars enter off of alleys than have multiple curb cuts per block where pedestrians and cars can interface. This project takes access from both the alley and Vermont in direct contradiction of code. Code prohibits the access on Vermont because of the availability of the alley. When we look at, I just want to point out when the applicant talks about how there would be no one backing up, I would like to point out that for the cars in the far side from the entrance, I'm not exactly sure how they could do anything but back up and how, if they're the only, if they're, if that's the only open spot. Given that this is a dead-end situation, there is not a turnaround area on either level. The applicant indicates in their letter that their frontage is along Vermont. However, the applicant did not propose the frontage along Vermont in their site plan included in the project report. The applicant cites the front setback as 15 feet on Boise Ave with a 10-foot setback on the side street of Vermont. When we look at the project report, it's clearly indicated in the plans. By the applicant's own application, they concede an applied under the understanding that Boise Avenue is indeed the frontage street. And therefore, this project has to be judged with Boise as the fronting road. The city planner instructed us that the fronting street was Vermont, but that is clearly not the case as shown by the form and design of the building and most importantly, the applicant's own plans. The reason why that's so important is we require different things out of our front than side rear setbacks in order to create better design for our city. Understanding that Boise is the front, this makes the rear setback be the north property line, which would be to the right-hand of your screen. The rear setback is always determined as the property line opposite from the front property line. This is significant because for a rear setback in an R2 zone, code requires 15 feet, and the applicant only allows for five. No variance or exemption is cited, and therefore, the project would require a 15-foot setback to approve. The clear code requirement is not being met. In regards to the side setback for parking 20 feet is required in a R2 zone to parking garage. Applicant argues that this means to where a car would be parked. This is incorrect and has never been how we interpreted code, nor I'm aware of anyone interpreting the code in this manner. Whenever we have setbacks to garages, it is measured from the building. One cannot, for example, build a 40-foot-long garage to the property line and then say that because they're only using the back 20 feet of the garage makes it meet standard. Anytime we see garages looked at in code, they're considered from the garage door to the property line. The applicant's contention that is where it happens to be parking the car is false. The code clearly requires parking in garages on a side street to be set back 20 feet from the property line. This is for safety, such that cars aren't blocking sidewalks and that you have a better vision for the roadway. The fact of the matter is, is because this is only 10 feet off instead of the required 20, it again doesn't meet the standard. This project doesn't meet the requirements of our code. We know this not only by looking at the plans but seeing the end result. Well, the comprehensive plan indicates that compact use areas are traditionally 10 to 16 per acre. This is over 68 units per acre. Clearly a high-density use. Many R3 uses are less dense than what is being proposed. My point is not that density is bad. And if they can make this density work with meeting the requirements, it is what it is. But with a form-based code, the core tenet is that by putting requirements such as setbacks in place, you end up with compatible development. And the fact is, is when you don't meet those requirements, you see development that is clearly incompatible. From the simplest eye test, we can see why these requirements are so vital. Garages are required to be 20 feet off the property line so that cars don't block sidewalks. Side setbacks are less than front setbacks because we desire a streetscape that debates. Side setbacks are less than front setbacks because we desire a streetscape that debates the street. We require parking to be taken from alleys because it enhances the built environment and is a safer situation for motorists, pedestrians and bicyclists alike. These requirements built into code are not arbitrary. They're the reason for that we can build a better city. We all went through a long and laborous process to build the new code. And each piece of it was really thought over as people tried to envision the city they want to live in. There were people I talked to who had loved ones injured in accidents who advocated for safer street design, which is why we require alley access and garage setbacks. There were people who lamented the canyons between buildings without proper setbacks, which is why we ended up with the side and rear setbacks we did. Each of the parts of the code is there because it mattered to someone and because it helps us build a stronger city. I implore you to uphold this appeal, send the applicant back to the planners such that they can submit a project that meets code and we'd be happy to work with them to figure out to do that. But we have to reject projects that don't meet our code because they are antithetical to the city that we all worked so hard to envision through the modern zoning code. Thank you. I'm open for any questions.
Thanks, Eric. Are there questions for Eric? It doesn't look like it right now. Appreciate your thoughtful testimony, Eric. We will, will you be here?
Yeah, I'm happy to stick.
Okay, all right. I'll let you, any, anything? All right. Right now there's not, so I'm going to go into the public. Let's see. Okay, I have a list right here of names that I'll read through. If you aren't on the list because, and I don't call your name, you can still testify if you want, just let me know and come on, come on up to the front, excuse me. And first we'll hear from Peggy Rodriguez. Hi Peggy.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council for letting me be heard. I live on the corner of Vermont and Hill. There's technically one building between me and this complex. It's a duplex, but I'm just 100 feet away and I did not get notice. And it's, it feels deceptive when you find out something's already been approved and you haven't even heard about it and it's on your block and it's going to affect everything. So it's looking into it, the density, it's more dense than the Verve and apartments down on the busy corners. As she said, Judy, in the beginning, I have it here, the, the actual density numbers, it's atrocious for this neighborhood. This is an old World War II neighborhood. We have duplexes, we have skinny homes, but we're homes. We anticipate things like this coming into our neighborhood. We do not anticipate a beast like this. I'm sorry, it's massive. If you stand on Vermont and you look at where it's going to come up to, we're going to lose the sun, privacy, parking. I know he said it's open parking. I don't know what that means. Because there are so few parking spots down below. There was a contractor who was supposed to be here tonight to testify that the parking garage is a mess, the angles of the, the ramps aren't correct, the parking spots, the turnability downstairs, that's, that interior is a mess there. That's, he was going to be here, I don't know where he is. Michelle Tanner across the street went downtown to get approval to put some parking spots on her alley and she's just right across the street and they said, okay, you get that, you take out your driveway. And this is simultaneous that we're getting the massive building that doesn't match, that gets a front on Vermont and a front and a driveway, a garage on the alley, but we homeowners can't. I mean, to, to be told you have to take out your driveway. And then this past week, she was there with her contractor. She's a homeowner. They got parking tickets while standing there and they said, this is a new thing in 2025 or only in April. Simultaneously about across one block down, this family, this owner, I watched ripped out their lawn, a tree, put in rocks, two parking spots. So that's illegal because they don't get the, the people can't park on the street, the right of way. And on the backside, they have two, two car garages and enough parking spaces on their wide driveway for eight cars. So just nothing is making sense. Things are out of control and it seems like the homeowners kind of under attack here. Our rights are being taken away and density is ruling. I do have, I don't have a driveway.
And you're, you're at time, so I'll give you one more sentence if you want to wrap up.
Okay. I don't have a driveway and I can't compete. I park at a neighbor's during game day. But the parking, I did get a phone call from the parking today. Can my, please just say that parking, they said that they don't get parking permits. Well, where are these cars going to park? If there aren't any parking spots.
Okay, thank you.
It's a beautiful neighborhood. This doesn't match. Just look at the name and it's on the Oregon Trail.
Sorry ma'am, I gave you a little extra time. I need to move on to Kathy.
It's on the Oregon Trail, which is beautiful. It doesn't match.
Is Kathy McFadden available? Hi. Nice to see you again.
Thank you.
Will you pull this down just a bit so we can hear you better?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Kathy McFadden. I live at 1330 Michigan in Boise, Idaho. I have lived at 1330 Michigan for 40 years this month. I'm here to express three points of concern about the project as it is currently designed at 1508 Boise Avenue. The first point is we've been told the project is a multi-family development. We were told many years ago that the identity building on Boise Avenue and Beacon would be for young professionals and regular citizens. That is not what happened. It is student housing, which added a tremendous amount of traffic to the intersection of Beacon and Boise Avenue. Next, the Verve building was added to Beacon and Boise Ave. And that is student housing. Again, more traffic. Last spring, I saw a young man killed at that intersection because of excessive speed and traffic. Now the project on Boise Avenue and Vermont will has the potential to put 52, possibly more vehicles by a six-way intersection and an alley entrance that is 200, the alley entrance is 220 feet from the six-way intersection. My second concern is that the traffic coming out of the alley going north will encounter two stop signs. One turning right on Vermont and Hale and one is turning left on Hale and Michigan. I live on the corner of Michigan and Hale. People run this stop sign by my corner eight to 20 times a day, sometimes more, depending on when BSU is in session. I watched this happen, sitting in my living room with that great big window. I also have a patio and a garden that are right on Hale, so I can see this happening. My third point of concern is having housing that has 42 beds, which could bring many more cars or parking somewhere. Because everybody has a friend. They don't just have a single person in single bed. Sometimes they have friends with cars. We also have four fraternities and four sororities within a two block radius of this project. Already impacting our neighborhood with all that goes on in the student culture. And as a last thought, that just we were talking about earlier. People all year long tend to go from protest to Broadway and they race their cars and their motorcycles accessing speeds of 50 miles an hour. Has that ever been taken into consideration with the six-way intersection and the alley that's going to be feeding traffic in and out? Thank you for letting me express my concerns.
Kathy, thank you. And just so you know, I'm going to share the last bit of information that you shared with us just now, the protest to Broadway speeding issue with our police department.
So thanks. It happens all the time. I mean, it's nothing new. And because we're right there.
I just want to flag it for him.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Right. Judy Osborne, you, you were the appellant, correct? Okay, all right. Is it Ken Whiff? That's a lot of Fs. I wasn't sure about that. There are three Fs at the end of your name.
Madam Mayor. Mr. President. Councilmembers, esteemed staff, thank you for the opportunity and the privilege of your attention. My name is Ken Whip.
And Ken, I'm just going to ask you to raise the mic a bit so we can hear you.
Well, it didn't creak that time, did it? Anyway, my name is Ken Whip. I live at 1415 West Garfield Street in South Boise Village, which is the fourth, fourth, uh, fourth district represented ably by Mr. Morales. That's the only brown nosing I'll do here. Okay. I have had, I've had extensive experience in construction as a general contractor, as well as a constructor, construction manager for a developer on the lead AP. I've also served on a town council and understand the limitations of testimony and the limitations that you're faced with. While the 18, the 1508 project is not in District Four, there are some issues that are a concern to us and that there are errors in approval of the project. First, and I'm going to go after Title 24 because I'm quite familiar with it. Given the number of floors of the proposed building, three plus, and a floor plate size in excess of 3,000 square feet for each floor, the federal government requires an elevator for accessibility. Elevators are not provided. Slopes and cross slopes of ramps are in excess of what is permitted, 8% slope, 2% slope, cross slope is required. No accessible units are designed or thought of. We think all these are required, not to have that acknowledged, we think is a flaw in the approval. Okay. One of the areas of concern is how required open space was calculated and I would request that it be looked at again because it appears that the setbacks may have been used as part of the calculation. I may be wrong. This is specifically though, if they were, is not permitted by code, by this code. Also using a 20 foot deep well in the center of the property is open space, probably not a code violation. But I guarantee that a 20 foot deep well will not receive a lot of sunlight over the year. It's not usable space. And so I think given that, in practice, it's an enclosed space. And with that argument, the intent of the code has not been met for open space as far as I'm concerned. Last page, code one, general provisions. Chapter 110103, permitted purpose, item four states that the quote, protection of the character of the neighborhoods, end quote, and there's more to that. Is that the code is what the code is all about. We suggest the opposite will result in the building of this, in this building in its current form and, and the goal of avoiding the diminution, I actually said that word, of property values will not be met. This will not help anybody's property values. And that objective is, is addressed in the code in chapter 11 dash five dash oh four B six. So there are items that, that are a matter, a matter of judgment. And I know that judgment is difficult for you guys to use and it's certainly difficult for staff. So I appreciate the consideration and I understand your concerns about using judges.
Thanks, Ken. And Jeff Cartwright. I like your shirt.
Oh, thank you. I wasn't prepared to speak, so I dressed casual. So I thought, I wasn't sure we were going to be able to.
You can always be casual when you speak here.
Excellent. You guys are my favorite. Madam Mayor, City Council, my name is Jeff Cartwright. I live at 210 West Howe Court. And I ask that you uphold this appeal request for the following reasons. Density is not in conformance with the blueprint Boise or the comprehensive plan and designation of the compact neighborhood violates the streetscapes and a predictable pattern of development as identified in the plan. And I know the city is working its way through implementing the comprehensive plan as it relates to the code. You guys have said it yourselves up here many times, like we're trying to figure this out still. So I know this is a hard thing to try and understand and wrap your head around. In fact, we as residents and citizens, we're still trying to wrap our head around it. And so if everybody's trying to wrap their head around it, I hope you listen to what people are saying. For, for instance, R2 seems to be like this magic pill everybody wants to throw out there, like R2 unlimited density, let's just do it. But in fact is, R2 is just zoning in the code and, but the code specifically says that decisions have to be in conformance with the comprehensive plan and the comprehensive plan, in my opinion, is being ignored over and over and over again in multiple places around the city. So because the code must also be in conformance with the plan under R2, as was mentioned earlier, the density is 15 units per acre or 45 units per, for a high density. So the design is also non-conformant with the plan because it is not ensured that the development blends seamlessly with the existing streetscapes. And I oppose the design based, or the, the design based upon non-conformance with the comprehensive plan, which is the very reason the city is proposing to do to our neighborhood, because I don't live in this neighborhood. I live in an adjacent neighborhood and you guys are doing the same thing or approving the same thing in our neighborhood with a three-story, 45-foot, 189-unit apartment complex in the middle of our neighborhood that's not in conformance with the plan. And so I ask you guys to not just look at the code, look at the conformance with the plan, because that is what the code says, that these decisions have to be in conformance with the land use or the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. There are more of you in here, more, would more of you like to testify? Come on up. And will you please read your name and address into the record?
Thank you.
Will you pull this down? We pull the mic down, please.
My name's Tracy Crawford and the address is 1501 West Boise Avenue. And I'm on the south side corner directly across from this project on the corner of Highland and Boise Avenue. And I have a real concern about the traffic because I have to back out of my driveway, which will be directly in line with that alley. I'm sure people are going to be coming out of that onto Boise Avenue. And it's already hard enough to get out on that street. And then you have that six-point street there and I, I've had my fence replaced twice from people hitting it coming around from Boise Avenue onto Highland. So I moved it back and now I have probably a 10 foot empty space around my lot. And I can just see people parking there. And I just, I don't want the cars. I don't want to have this humongous building right across from you that I'll be looking at. I just, I would hope that you would say no to this project. Thank you.
We've got some folks online.
Madam Mayor, this is Nicole Bear.
Hi Nicole.
Hi. Hello, my name's Nicole Bear. Thank you for having me. I live right across from where this development will be at 1509 West Boise Avenue. I've lived in this neighborhood for the better part of 15 years. I'm a homeowner. I've lived in my home for about 10. I really love this neighborhood. It's a great mix of income types and ages and housing types. It's a vibrant neighborhood. We've got a lot of people out and about and interacting and I really hope that continues. My argument is less technical than some of my neighbors, but first off, our city is changing. We need more housing. This development would replace a single family home on a huge lot in a very central location. I think that's a great thing and the perfect place for this type of development. As far as parking goes, if you walk around this neighborhood every day like I do, you can see that there is ample street parking in addition to what will be included in the development. I walk my dog down the middle of Vermont every day at peak traffic hours. And while I also would love a sidewalk all the way down Vermont, it's perfectly safe for pedestrians as is. As far as traffic on the nearby streets and on Boise Avenue, it can get busy. I share some of the concerns about the stop sign running in particular. I would urge more attention to this area from relevant authorities and in particular clearly marked stop signs. It's just kind of hard to see the stop signs at these intersections. I think that's why a lot of that stop sign running happens. But given our proximity to BSU, this development, the size of it, the amount of extra cars is not going to change any of those dynamics in any kind of fundamental way. And given the location, it seems likely that many of the residents here are likely going to be commuting on foot or bicycle headed toward the university, headed toward downtown. And in fact, I'm really excited about the emphasis on a better pedestrian experience, uh, experience in these latest designs. I'm pretty dismayed that my neighbors are upset about the height of the building or its conformance to the neighborhood. Or frankly, more cars parked near their homes. This is part of living in a society and in a city. And those concerns don't, in terms of my values, outweigh the need for more housing supply. I am a lot more concerned about looming housing supply issues than a building looming over my house. So our city is growing. We can't stop that. But what we can do is decide whether we're going to have a bunch of sprawl and only the wealthiest people. and only the wealthiest people and out-of-town landlords owning property in central neighborhoods, or if we're going to have a community with dense housing, so lots of different people um, and different kinds of people can live near downtown and near the university. Um, I want the latter, so I'm happy to support this development. Thank you.
Thanks, Nicole. Doesn't look like there's anybody else online. Ask if anybody else wants to testify. Are there questions for staff before we do final statements?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, uh, I have a question in regards to, um, I, there's a lot of questions about the setbacks and what is the front, um, and what is the back and the side rear. Can, can we help clear that up?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Corless, sorry, I was looking to see, um, if I had a slide note on that, but, um, yeah, so, um, if your question was to go into how we analyze the setbacks, where they're located, I'm happy to answer that.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, um, I think Sina had brought up that the initial application showed that Boise Avenue was the front. Uh, also noticed that the leasing office shows that their opening is also up to Boise Avenue. So is Boise Avenue considered the front or is Vermont considered the front?
Okay, I think I understand your question. Um, so wait, so I'm not, I'm unaware of like an initial application where Boise Avenue designated as the front setback. Uh, how we reviewed this application, um, was designating the front setback first, um, which we usually, not usually, but it is procedure to do, and we follow the rules of measurement section of the code, um, to align with adjacent properties. So we look at the surrounding properties and we look to see who else fronts the street. How do those, um, side yards and rear yards line up? And so based on this location, um, with access taken, um, on, uh, with front, I'm sorry, the front setback being on Vermont for the adjacent properties, the front setback was thus Vermont for this project. Um, a part of the code, we, in the design section, we, um, encourage design and development to front, street frontages like Boise Avenue to have more of an activating space. Um, so it is normal to see a door opening up to a side of a street, um, that's not necessarily the front setback, but is, um, activating on a street frontage. So, um, just because the door is opening on Boise Avenue doesn't necessarily negate that if that's the front setback. So Boise Avenue is the street-side setback. If you're looking at Vermont as the front, the interior side is the adjoining property line, and then the rear is the alley.
Madam Mayor, Rachel, thank you for that clarification. Um, my follow-up question is then on, um, what we have for the front entry for a parking garage, and is there twenty feet there from the property line to the, to the garage door, or how is that calculated?
Um, to follow up on your question, the, um, the setback that we calculated there was to the building frontage. Um, there was an earlier question that we answered about residential garages and whether or not, um, there was a twenty-foot setback. This, um, is not, um, defined as a residential garage. We would define a residential garage for a single-family home. So this is a parking structure. We're looking at the building, and so the ten-foot setback was applied per, um, the table shown here on the screen. Um, so if that was referencing the twenty-foot, um, question that was brought up earlier, um, we would look at this as ten-foot to the building.
Madam, thank you, Rachel. Appreciate it.
Further questions for staff?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, could you talk about the idea about misalignment between Blueprint Boise and then we're doing here? That was brought up in the testimony.
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Willetts, um, I believe the, um, the item that was brought up earlier is referencing how the comp plan designates this area. So the comp plan, um, is our governing guiding document, and, um, this area um, is compact, and so when we analyze a, a project, we're, um, we're really looking at the zoning regulations. So the comp plan gives us a guiding direct direction, and then we build zoning regulations off of that. And so the comp plan gives us the direction, but the zoning, um, the R two zone gives us, um, the guide on how, um, the development is built out.
Thank you. So now we'll hear final statements. We hear from the applicant first so that then the appellant has the last word. Oh, did you want to testify?
Do I make?
Uh, we, no, we, we, I can have you ask questions of staff afterwards. Um, we, we hear testimony, but we don't, we can't answer questions. I'm sorry, ma'am. All right, come on up.
Madam Mayor, members of council, again, Ben Semple, Rodney Evans and Partners. Um, I, I guess what I want to reiterate is through this entire process from our initial early assistance with the city Boise staff, uh, we were given direction on how to modify the plan to comply with all of the city code standards, both the zoning code and the design review standards. Um, really, the design of the building was the first and foremost thing that was being looked at here as it was an allowed by right in an R two for a multifamily structure. I'm glad that, uh, Rachel pointed out the setbacks. Um, we were, you know, when we brought this in, they said, yeah, the front's going to be Vermont. Um, the rear would be the alley because it does align with the property that's to the north. They're, that's their side setback. Rather than put a non-conforming rear setback against a side setback, which is a premise that's held in a lot of development throughout the city and a lot of different, uh, zones. Um, on the, the leasing office, yeah, I mean, that was kind of a process of the topo of the site as well to create as, um, accessible of an entry as possible into that, that space. Um, there are two unit front doors that open up onto Vermont too, so there's not just a garage door there. There's some units that open. And then the Boise Avenue frontage has not only the leasing office, but I believe also two other front doors of units that directly access the street frontage there, and the desire was to activate both frontages as much as possible. Um, I wanted to touch a little bit about the garage setback. It is something that I'm going to talk to the architectural designer about as I believe that there's that lower level, there's kind of some storage space that is adjacent to both sides of that garage door where we may be able to create a cantilever to push that door a little further into the space just to increase a little bit more room there. Um, currently from the curb line, we will have an eight-foot planter strip, then a five-foot, uh, sidewalk. I believe it's about a foot and a half to the property line, and then another ten feet. So we're about twenty-five feet from the curb line to the garage door as it is right now. So I'll, I'll talk with the designer to see if that's something that they can push a little further back because it wouldn't impact parking, um, in terms of access to the spaces, interior to the space. Um, that's all I had to add, um, and I'd welcome any other questions you might have for me.
Madam Mayor, Ben, thank you. I am, I'm trying to wrap my head around Eric's testimony about essentially the site plan being flipped, and you've, you've just mentioned more about that. Can you dig a little deeper because he had a pretty compelling testimony about why this shouldn't be allowed, and I'd, I'd just like to hear more from you on that.
For Madam Mayor and Councilmember Willetts, um, in terms of what was chosen for the front of the building, um, again, what, when we brought in the project, um, it was a very rough site plan. Um, we talked to staff and they said to conform with the property adjacent to us, we should put our side setback on the north because that would be the side of the building adjacent to another, it's a two-story townhome project that's there. We actually did increase the setback of the third and fourth floors to an additional setback there. Um, even though it's the code really black and white states that it's adjacent to a single story where you have to increase setbacks, but we felt like stepping it back would help reduce that massing and help with that setback a little bit more. Um, ultimately, that's where we were given direction from city staff as where our setback should be. Um, the alley is almost always a rear setback, um, whether that's for single-family or multifamily development. Um, and that's why we chose the direction that we chose with the site plan.
And I may run another question. Um, I want to talk a little bit about ADA compliance. What, what is required? Do you need an elevator?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Willetts, I'm going to have to talk with the architectural designer, um, on this. He is very good at ADA compliance and code compliance. He does a ton of multifamily stuff, and he never once mentioned that we were required to have an elevator, um, which is why he didn't design one in here. Um, if that, you know, as we get into building permits in the middle, you know, that'll be fully vetted through that review as well. Um, if that gets flagged as something we need to add, um, I know that he did review the stairwell access and made sure that that diagonal through the architectural design standards and international fire code and building code was met. Um, but my understanding, and I'm not a building architect, is I thought it was five floors or more required in elevator, not four, but, um, again, I'd have to default back to an architect.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Ben, thanks so much for taking our questions today, and I just want to be really clear. So, um, I think our code is pretty black and white that the front entry parking garage is twenty feet, um, as we can see up there. Um, but it's, but today it's not. I know you're saying you're looking at pushing that in. Is, is it eleven feet from the property line?
So the current parking garage, if you look at the wall of the garage, which again, there's uses between that wall and the parking, is currently twenty-two foot, ten inches from the back of the proposed sidewalk and currently twenty-one feet. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, twenty-one feet. It'll so be eleven feet or twelve foot, ten, um, from the back of walk and ten feet from the property line to the building wall. The way that we were given the information from the city staff and the way that I've interpreted that is that if you have usable space within your building, that is not considered your parking garage. Similarly to if you had a garage with a stairwell that went up to an ADU above, I believe that the setback is measured to where that garage door, um, is from the street. They wouldn't say that your building wall is your garage because the use inside that wall wasn't a garage. That's the way I've interpreted it.
Right. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And now we'll hear from the appellant.
Madam Mayor and City Council, um, first of all, the, the front and the side of the building is what's really bugging us. Everything that came out was, the address is fifteen oh eight Boise Avenue, and now they're trying to change it to the, to the Vermont address, and when you look at this building, the front doors, everything, it, it's on Boise Avenue. It's, yeah, that should be the front. So the side, so the back should be that north, um, part, and they're just trying to get more property squeezed as much as they can, and so they're trying to just change the address around. It just, everything, the picture of it, the front of it, everything is just, you know, it should be, the Boise Avenue should be the front of the building, and that's, you know, then they tried to change it. So that's one thing. Um, he did talk about the garage part of it, which, you know, anybody else who would try to do this would probably get in trouble. So there, you know, he said he would try to work on that, so. Um, still, you call this, it, it still is a garage that is attached to a residential building. So she's saying that that garage doesn't have to follow standards because it's a parking garage, but it's really attached to residential, just like a house. A garage is attached to a house. So I don't know what the difference is between, you know, they say one thing, but it really is attached to residential living, so it should be, have the same codes that every, you know, that we all have to go by in our life. So the approval is not the con, is, is not in conflict with the policies of the comprehensive plan, and that code is eleven dash oh five oh four six parentheses A three. So, um, we're just asking that you, you would think of everything that's going on there. It's just such a high-density building in such a residential neighborhood, and I understand what the other people were feeling, you know, that we need more housing in Boise. I understand that, but I don't know if we need this massive housing on this corner. It's such a busy intersection. And, um, and it doesn't seem to have to follow the plans that we're all trying to follow too. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Judy. All right, I am going, are there further questions for staff? Right, I'm going to close the public hearing. And then I'd ask that, I'm just so everybody understands now what happens is I'm going to ask that a motion be on the floor so that then the council can debate and discuss the issue, um, and then there are five people, so, right, one, two, three, four, five. Um, there won't be a tie tonight, so I won't be voting. Um, in the past, I've said I, I won't be voting, but it's not by choice. It's because there's not a tie or there's.
We can make it for, one of us can step.
You can just step away, all that. So I've been trying to explain it, folks, especially since it was your neighborhood that was here when I didn't explain it the first time around. Uh, with that, I will, um, I'd like a motion, and then council may discuss.
Madam Mayor, uh, I move that the appeal of DRH twenty-four dash three four eight be denied, and the decision of the Design Review Commission to allow for construction of a twenty-six-unit multifamily residential building in R two zone at fifteen oh eight West Boise Avenue be upheld, and the record reflect that the grounds for appeal do not demonstrate an error in the decision of the commission. Madam Mayor, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion second, and now we may have discussion.
Madam Mayor, um, I'll kick it off since I made the motion. So first, I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight. Um, it's important to hear from our neighbors, and even if tonight, and I'm not sure which way this will go, but even if you don't win your case tonight, your testimony is appreciated, and it does lend to our future policy decisions. Um, I made the motion because the Design Review Committee has a very narrow scope of review, and in an appeal, we have an even narrower, narrower scope. Um, and I wasn't convinced that the Design Review acted in error on this application. We aren't reviewing the development tonight, but just the appropriateness of the Design Review Committee's decision in relation to the city's design standards. Uh, most of what I felt like I heard tonight are, um, issues with our development code and our regulations, things like the area required for noticing neighbors, alley access for multifamily, parking requirements, density allowances, things like that. Um, this really is a useful infill project on an unusually shaped lot, in my opinion. Um, there was some testimony tonight about, uh, I think it was that the, uh, it was against students what was said, but I don't think, um, this housing is being restricted to students only, but the property is a quarter mile from campus. It's not, I'm not quite sure where students in our city should be living, if not within a quarter mile of the university. Um, it doesn't mean it's not also appropriate for single-family and for families, but also in my opinion, it's appropriate for students. Um, I wanted to address a couple of the other concerns and share some thoughts. First, we have to trust with the expertise of our partners. In this case, there was a lot of testimony um, that fits into ACHD's Whale House about intersections, traffic, the roads, um, the road configuration and traffic patterns, and that is not the expertise of the city of Boise. That's the expertise of ACHD, and we have to trust their, their decisions here. Um, second, to clarify a lot of the comments about Blueprint Boise, Blueprint Boise is a policy guide, but it is not the policy. Um, we can't legally overturn policy, um, but the, so the development code outweighs Blueprint Boise, if that makes sense. So it's the reason we've mentioned Blueprint Boise a lot recently is because it's breached its useful life without revision, and it needs to be revised, and it's on the radar of our staff and of the city to revisit that document. Um, we, there have just been other urgent priorities. So it's on the last, I would say, um, and, uh, it's also frustrating to me that we don't have a policy guide that is supported by our policy, and so I hope that And so I hope that soon we'll be able to refocus on that. Uh, but for those reasons, that's why I made the motion.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, um, along with Councilmember Sted, I also, we have, I, I'm going to reiterate because it is really important to note that we have a very strict standard on what we can review um with this appeal. And it's whether or not there was error found in the decision-making process um from our design review. Um, and in looking through this and talking through this, it, we are not allowed to remove density, heights, anything on this appeal. But again, to reiterate, just whether or not error was found. And I don't believe there was error um in the commission. I do believe there was a lot of points brought up tonight that we can take and we can do a little bit better because there's nothing we can't do better, um, such as reconsideration of the noticing that is sent out for these type of applications. Um, also, I'm being very clear for the setbacks, um, what's the front to, to make sure we're up, we are absolutely clear when looking at the designs, what's the front, what's the side, what's the back? Because that will impact the setbacks and also with the parking garage. When is that applicable? Is it with a multifamily housing? Um, and, and I just think we need to clarify that a little bit more. So there, there's stuff that was really brought up. I appreciate everyone coming out. And your testimonies do make an impact and will make this better, um, even better process by taking your input and taking that back to our team and looking at that as we continue to modify our um, our new zoning code. It's a living document. It's going to be updated. And these are the kind of input that we need on it. So thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, uh, thank you. Just um, all, I think Council Pro Tem Sted and Councilmember Corless kind of hit the nail on the head in terms of the appeal review, but I do want to make a number of comments because you and so many others that are not here that sent in uh written comment or testified in prior hearings provided a lot of really good feedback, concerns, ideas, issues, and so just to kind of comment on some of those. Um, I, I think we heard a couple different things tonight. Um, we heard from the Southeast Neighborhood Association that um, yeah, the density wasn't the problem necessarily, that that was by right, but that, that it was the design, uh, some of the form and function issues. Um, however, a lot of the neighbors kind of highlighted the density. And I think it's just really important to understand um how density actually adds value to our neighborhoods. And when we think about the students or staff that are going to live here that want to live close to work, um, would you prefer that they drove all the way from Kuna and have your taxes pay for all those roads? Or would you prefer that they're able to walk? Um, I think, I wish I lived close enough to be able to walk uh to work myself. Um, and so when we think about density, we need to get people um close to where they want to be, whether that's work, school, whatnot. Um, this does that, these areas. I think uh in terms of setbacks, I really appreciate Eric's testimony. Eric is so good about details and does a really good job for Southeast Neighborhood, Southeast Boise's Neighborhood Association. Um, and I, I think this was a really tough lot because um Eric brought a compelling testimony tonight about the confusion on this. But I also think you could look at this so many different ways. If you're looking at the front of a property, if I'm thinking about, hey, I'm, I just got home from travel from the airport and I'm taking a lift to where I'm living and I'm going to this, this place, is the lift dropping me off at Boise Avenue? Probably not. And so there's probably a lot of different ways to look at this, a very unique lot. And so I think with setbacks, I understand, I understand that this, it just does not uh, does not make for an easy case on these things. And I appreciate planning and, and all the different opinions there. And I do believe this is the project that Sina refers to in a letter of feedback on the modern zoning code that they provided us in January and planning staff has on hand as we consider kind of a deeper dive into the zoning code in year two. Um, we'll have some cleanup stuff from year one, but um, this is definitely, I think, on our radar to be able to kind of look at those, those issues, those concerns. Um, you know, I know this area very well. I was a BSU student. I uh worked on the south side of BSU campus for a long time. I've walked around this, this area. I've known people live, I still know the people that live here. Um, you know, I'm familiar with the growth of Boise State. Um, they sold out of parking permits for the first time, I think, this year. And so it's growing and that's probably not sustainable. And I think when I asked um, you know, the applicant about what the plans are for parking, I think if, if it's easy, if our, if our students that are coming here to be part of our community, it's easy to bring their vehicles, they will. But do they need to? I don't think it's sustainable. And I would point to much bigger universities like UT Austin that has West Campus, uh, buildings that are taller than buildings downtown here full of students, 20,000 students, I believe it is, in West Campus. And it is a culture of being able to walk across the street to the university. And I think as we're growing as a city, as a campus community, that we probably need to have some conversations about how we evolve um and take advantage of a lot of the benefits that would come without having to be car-dependent. And that, that provides a lot of affordability for those residents that aren't car-dependent um for students that are paying for expensive school and those kinds of things. Um, but looking at our parking district there and trying to figure out what, what does this look like? Um, assuming that we, our metropolitan research to university of distinction continues to grow. So um, I really appreciate everyone highlighting that because while we can't take that into account tonight, it's something that we can work on in other ways throughout the city. And so I appreciate everyone bringing that. And then the last thing I'd like to say is noticing, sorry, uh, this is a lot, this is my last point though. Um, we have been talking about the development tracker for over a year now. I love the development tracker. I think we only have like 2,000 or 3,000 subscribers. Go subscribe, you know, I feel like a YouTube influencer here, but if you care about your neighborhood and you want to know what's going on, it's super easy. Go Google Boise Development Tracker, subscribe for your planning area and you'll get notice of everything that comes before you. It's super cool and interesting. And I would just um encourage everyone to do that again. Thanks.
Madam Mayor, first of all, I just want to thank the neighbors that came out tonight. This is so much work. The work that you've put to, to present this does not go unnoticed. And the, the amount of time you've taken to talk to your neighbors about this, the technicalities involved. I, I want you to know that you're heard. You really are heard. Um, and I think we learned a lot that we can do better um from a policy perspective. This is really helpful for us. You could have stayed home and been like, meh, not worth it. But what you pointed out will help us do things better in the future and we need that. And I'm, I'm constantly concerned that in our environment, people are going to get discouraged from speaking up and pointing out things. And I want people to continue to point out things that we can do better on all levels of government. Uh, to the developer, I have, I have empathy and sympathy. I mean, you, you did what you were told. You, you had a, uh, you had staff recommendations. Good soldier. Um, but I'm really uneasy about this. There is something um in my stomach that just doesn't feel good about this and I got to vote my conscience. Um, my colleagues made really good points, but I'd be able to sleep at night. And I, the address site swap is just really giving me a lot of pause and I'm uneasy about it, so I'll be voting no.
Thank you. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Corless.
Uh, yes to denying the appeal.
Ross.
Yes.
Nash.
Yes.
Ted.
Yes.
Willid.
No.
Four in favor, one opposed, motion carries.
Thank you. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Madam Mayor, would we adjourn?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.